We have a second. We have a second from Council Mascara. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. The bills over 15,000 are approved. Item number three on the agenda is approval of purchases over $15,000. I believe that we have one purchase this evening. Mr. Daniels, will you go through that with us, please?
We have one purchase for council's consideration tonight. It's for a storm drain repair in Earlwood subdivision. There are two separate storm drain outfalls in the Earlwood subdivision that drain into the pond, and they are both deteriorated beyond repair and need replacement. We received two proposals and asked for a price and a timeline to complete the work. Staff's recommendation is that you award the bid to Tealake Environmental for $27,565.95. The time to complete the project, once they are notified of the approval, it is estimated that there will be two weeks to order the materials and an additional two weeks for the labor to install those materials.
All right. Any questions for staff regarding this? I know we discussed it during pre-council. Any additional questions? If not, do we have a motion?
Make a motion for approval.
Second.
All right. We have a motion for approval from Councilman Griggs with a second from Councilman Colby. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing no discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. All right. We'll now move to item number four on the agenda, which is discussion and action on gap grant terms and conditions, and this is the Georgia Gang Activity Prosecution Grant Program. Mr. Daniels?
We've been approved to continue the Georgia Gang Activity Prosecution Grant Program, but this year, we've also been approved for some additional funding, and that will cover five OptiPlex computers and six Tough Books to purchase for those gang officers to use in their investigations. The cost for the computers is $8,200, and for the Tough Books, $15,750. Staff's recommendation is that you approve the terms and conditions of this grant.
All right. And I know that we have Chief Moon here this evening. If anybody has any questions regarding this, for Chief Moon or actually for the public's benefit, Chief Moon, do you mind just describing the Formulitics program that this grant will fund for the city?
Yes, sir. We've had this software for about three years now, and what it does, it lets us gain intelligence on gangs that are in our district and share that information throughout the state of Georgia. It also connects us with the DA's office and shares all this information for prosecution.
All right. So how long have you been using the Formulitics software?
About three years now.
And what's your, has it been a helpful piece of software, or what's your experience with it been?
It's been used a lot with establishing predicate crimes with the Attorney General's Office and the prosecution of gangs, yes.
All right. And you recommend that we approve additional, this additional grant program?
Yes, sir.
All right. Any questions for Chief Moon? All right. Thank you, Chief Moon. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Brown and a second from Councilman Jones to approve the gang, let's see, the Gang Activity Prosecution Grant. Do we, so we have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion on the motion? Hearing no discussion on the motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. All right. We'll now move to item number five on the agenda, which is the approval or action on the approval of the Lawrence County Joint Comprehensive Plan. Mr. Daniels?
This is Resolution 2442, a resolution of the City of Dublin, Georgia by and through its mayor and council to approve and adopt the Lawrence County Joint Comprehensive Plan Vision 2050, Lawrence County's blueprint for a vibrant community as the city's official local comprehensive plan under the Georgia Planning Act of 1989, to set an effective date and for other lawful purposes.
All right. So I know that we had our town planner, Tara Bradshaw, at pre-council giving us some information about this joint comprehensive plan. My understanding is that there have been several months of meetings with the county and other municipalities in the county to come up with this joint comprehensive plan. Are there any questions for staff at this time regarding the comprehensive plan? All right. If not, do we have a motion?
About one. This plan is flexible, right?
Comprehensive.
Comprehensive, not.
Yeah. And I think, and this is something that has come up, I think, in the past, is that if there's something in the plan and council wants to do something different later as far as a zoning issue or something like that, we're not, our hands aren't bound by the plan necessarily. It's supposed to guide our actions, not determine our actions.
You have a lot of flexibility within your comprehensive.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Great. Do we have any other questions?
I'm moved for approval.
Second.
All right. So we have a motion for approval from Councilman Brown with a second from Councilman Griggs. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing no discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you for your work, Tara, in helping put together that comprehensive plan. We'll now move to item number six on the agenda, which is the adoption of a final tax millage rate for the City of Dublin. Mr. Daniels?
This is Resolution 2443, a resolution by the mayor and council of the City of Dublin to direct and approve the assessment, levy, and collection of the 2024 City of Dublin Final Tax Millage for the Operation and Maintenance of the City of Dublin to authorize and direct the city treasurer and city tax marshal to assess, levy, and collect said ad valorem taxes and for other lawful purposes. This year, the, for the City of Dublin, the net digest increased roughly $199 million due to the inflationary growth of, that we had to recognize of 174 million true growth. The differences in the different classification and property types last year was roughly $24 million. Therefore, our rollback rate this year was 4.6 mills. Staff's recommendation to council is to roll back the millage rate from 5.948 mills from last year to 4.6 mills this year.
All right. You have heard staff recommendation. Do we have a motion? And then we can have discussion after the motion.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Mascara with a second from Councilman Griggs to adopt the 4.6 full rollback rate. Do we have any discussion on the motion at this time? Any questions for staff regarding this? All right. If there are no questions and no discussion, then all, now, we can do this by verbal vote, right? We don't have to have a roll call. Then all those in favor of the rollback rate of 4.6 mills, please say aye.
Aye.
If there are any opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
All right. So let the record reflect that this, that there was, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, five votes in favor, one vote opposed. The 4.6-mill rollback rate has been adopted. We'll now move to item number seven on the agenda, which is discussion and action to approve a 2024 Community Development Block Grant Award. Mr. Daniels?
This is Resolution 2444, a resolution by the mayor and council of the City of Dublin to accept and approve a community development block grant from the Georgia Department of Community Affairs for the street, flood, drainage, and sidewalk improvements on West Mary Street, to authorize the mayor to execute and deliver documents for the grant, to set an effective date, and for other lawful purposes.
All right. So we discussed this at our pre-council meeting, and just for the public's benefit, this is a long-needed infrastructure improvement to the West Mary Street area to help with sidewalks and drainage. And if we have received this grant award from the Department of Community Affairs, it's 900, roughly $940,000. We will match that with approximately $50,000 in cash and $100,000 of in-kind effort from our city staff for a total project of roughly $1.1 million to improve the infrastructure in the West Mary Street area. The timeline, let's see, do you, can you tell us the timeline again?
The, Tara, you correct me if I'm wrong on this, but there's a post-award meeting later this month that has to proceed when all this starts, and then at that point, we would be anticipating construction.
We have to begin construction in 2025. We have to have it completed by 2026, so there's 15 hours. We have to get it done.
Okay. So again, just for those people who couldn't hear from the audience, that we have a post-award meeting that occurs within 30 days. Construction must begin on the project in 2025, and the project must be complete in 2026. All right. Are there any questions for staff regarding this project? I know this is something that we've all wanted to be, to do for a long time, and we got this grant money for it. Do we have any questions? If not, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Jones and a second from Councilman Brown. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Please say nay. The ayes have it, and we're excited about getting that project started.
Excuse me.
All right. We're now at item number seven, which is an agreement for emergency disaster recovery and FEMA public assistance. Mr. Daniels?
This is Resolution 2445, a resolution by the mayor and council of the City of Dublin, Georgia, authorizing the city manager to negotiate a contract for emergency disaster recovery and FEMA public assistance with Goodwin Mills and Kaywood LLC to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the same, to set an effective date, and for other lawful purposes. Basically, this is an emergency contract that we will be leaning on. This firm, who has a disaster recovery division, they will guide us through the documentation requirements of FEMA, as well as eligible expenditures that can be submitted. And once this 90-day is, contract is up for them, with them, I'm sorry, we will have to comply with the bidding requirements.
All right. Any questions for staff regarding this FEMA contract? All right. If there are no questions, do we have a motion?
Make a motion for approval.
Second.
We have a motion to approve from Councilman Griggs, a second from Councilman Brown. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing no discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Right. We'll now move to, one second. Item number nine on the agenda, which is our 2024 resurfacing project list. Mr. Daniels?
This is Resolution 2446, a resolution by the mayor and council of the City of Dublin to award a bid to Sykes Brothers, Inc., for the 2024 resurfacing project, to authorize the city manager to approve change orders, to provide for an effective date and for other lawful purposes. This year, the resurfacing list went out. Each year, we receive LMIG funding from the state, and including our 10% match, this year, we had received a little over $295,000 in LMIG funding. Additionally, the city received an additional $332,000 for street resurfacing. Sykes Brothers bid on this particular list of streets was $795,773.75. Staff proposes to use, to supplement the shortfall of $168,000 roughly, T of discretionary funds, to complete this project.
All right. So as the public can see, we have a map on the screen here. The map shows, I believe it's 14, 16 difference, maybe more than that.
It's 20.
20 streets that are, that are going to be resurfaced under this project. We were talking about pre-council. This is probably the most number of streets that have ever been part of a single season of resurfacing, and, and again, practically all of this is being paid for out-of-state grants, and the balance of it being paid for from excess sales tax dollars. So at this time, do we have a motion regarding the 2024 resurfacing list?
Make a motion for approval.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Griggs with a second from Councilman Colby to approve
the 2024 resurfacing project bid award. Do we have any discussion on the motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Matthew, do you know when this project would get started? Would it be this year or next year?
Yeah, they should start before the end of the year.
Thank you.
How, how long does it take to do this size project?
This is probably, probably a three-month project.
Okay. So we'd be looking at early spring?
Yeah, it depends on weather.
Depends on the weather.
They can pave as long as it's 40 degrees and rising, so we're predicted to have mild winter, and they should have attention.
All right. Any other questions? If not, we have, did we have a motion and a second already? And so now, we just need a vote. So all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. We'll now move to item number 10 on the agenda, which is our 2025 Health and Supplement Benefits Package. Mr. Daniels?
This is Resolution 2447, a resolution by the mayor and council of the City of Dublin to authorize the city manager to secure health and supplemental insurance benefits for the 2025 plan year for the City of Dublin, to set an effective date and for other lawful purposes. We have been working on ways to help reduce our personnel costs here at the city, particularly the fringe cost, and one, one known cost that we incur each year, additional cost, is the cost of health insurance. So we, our broker, MSI Benefits Group, we've been working, our HR Director, Dwayne Greer, our city manager, and myself have been working diligently to shop prices and work with that group to come up with the best options for the city, and staff's recommendation for the plan year 2025 is that we would leave a fully funded model and go to a self-funded model for our health insurance.
And we spent a lot of time at pre-council going over the specific numbers of this, but, you know, the, what it came down to was that our GMA renewal quote was 3.3 million, the Cigna quote was roughly 2.9 million, and the expected liability under a self-funded model was 2.5 million, so that our savings may range from, anywhere from $300,000 to $800,000 by going to the self-funded model, even though there is slight risk that if we have a very bad year for claims, that that number could go up to 3.1 million, which would still be less than the, than staying with GMA. I know that there were a lot of questions, a lot of very good questions at our pre-council. Were all those questions answered, or do we have additional questions?
I have one more.
Okay. Go for it.
Would our costs to the employee monthly go up or go down?
Those costs to the employee would remain the same.
They would remain the same?
Yes.
So what they're paying now for like a family plan would not go up? It'd be the same?
Their, their insurance cost would remain the same for this year.
Okay. That's a good question. Any other questions? All right. Is there any other information that any council member needs to be able to make an informed decision on this healthcare plan? All right. If not, do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right. We have a motion from Councilman Griggs to approve the self-funded model of healthcare according to the, the benefit package that was presented to us. We had a second from Councilman Mascara. Any discussion on the motion? All right. Hearing no discussion on the motion. All those in favor of this, please say aye.
Aye.
If there's any opposed, please say nay. All right. The ayes have it, and this will be a little bit different for the City of Dublin, but this is the same model that's used by towns such as Warner Robins, by Housman County, by Lawrence County. There are many other communities that have gone to this model and experienced great cost savings, so hopefully, we'll have the same experience here. We'll now move to item number 11 on the agenda, which is discussion and action on approving, approving an amendment to the agreement with Garbit Construction for the Oconee Gym Project and establishing a guaranteed maximum price for that project. Mr. Daniels?
This is Resolution 2448, a resolution by the mayor and council of the City of Dublin to approve an amendment to the contract with Garbit Construction Company to establish a guaranteed maximum price for the Oconee Gym Project, to authorize the mayor to execute and deliver the same, to provide for an effective date, and for other lawful purposes. The GMP that we've received from Garbit for this project is $2,998,523. Staff recommends that we, that you approve the resolution to authorize the amendment to the original contract.
All right. Do we have, we'll have a motion and a second, and then we'll have discussion. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion for approval.
We have a motion to approve from Councilman Griggs. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Second from Councilman Brown. Any discussion on the motion?
Would you let the constituents know the tariff plan?
Okay. Yeah.
The subcommittee?
Sure. So there is the Oconee Gym Advisory Committee, and I think that this is something that we talked about in pre-council. All the recommendations of the advisory committee have been adopted into this amended plan. Those amendments include the telescoping bleachers, additional goals, adjustments to the weight room and the locker rooms. There'll be a, one full-size basketball court and two smaller courts. There'll also be room for a volleyball court. So basically, all the recommendations from that committee have been adopted. The committee was supposed to meet during the week that the hurricane hit, so that meeting had to be canceled, but Ms. Bradshaw will be scheduling a makeup meeting to go over with the committee all the, the final plans that adopted all the recommendations from the committee, and then my understanding is that Garbit Construction will meet with them on-site at a later time to go over the project scope. So is that, does that answer? Okay. And Councilman Jones, did you have any questions?
Yes.
Okay. Great. Any other questions or comments? All right. We've had a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. We're really excited to get that project started, and thank you for coming from Garbit Construction. Can you tell us the start date now that we have the approval?
Yes, sir. So it takes about two weeks to mobilize, but we've been guys ready to start tomorrow afternoon. Just can't get it.
Okay. Terrific. Well, I know everybody in the community is going to be excited to see that project break ground and get underway. And what's the estimated time of completion?
August 1st.
Of, okay. So we'll definitely need to be planning a big celebration when that project is done next summer. All right. At this time, that completes our regular agenda, and it is time for citizens' comments. Is there anyone from the citizens who'd like to make a comment? Please come forward. And as everyone knows, the, the comments are limited to three minutes. Our city clerk, Heather Browning, has a timer here to help you know when the time is up. She'll also motion you if there's, you know, if, once it's reaching three minutes, and we welcome all comments. Of course, it's not a time for back and forth, but if you raise any questions, we'll be, we'll try to answer those after the comments are over. Go ahead. Thank you.
My name is George Hollingsworth, and I'm on the board of the Oconee Alumni Building. What I would like to know, are they gonna pass out blueprints of the program that's certified by the committee for the project as a finalization of what's got to be done on the blueprints for the project?
All right. Thank you for that comment, and I can, I can just tell you that the intent is to provide the, the architectural plans and the building plans for the project to the committee, so the committee will have all the information about the, about the project plans. Thank you for your comment, Mr. Hollingsworth, and thank you for your work on the committee.
I am Ray Blutworth. I would like some updates on the Stub Gym.
Do you have any other comments, or is that just it?
I would just like some update. I haven't heard anything about the Stub Gym since, well, a couple of months ago. You put it on pause. Have you heard anything back about the gym, or what you're gonna do with it? You gonna tear it down? Repair it?
All right. All right. Thank you for your comments, and I can just tell you that the, that there, I believe that, are we still waiting on the, the plans from Seabolt, from Orion Engineer, or from Orion Design?
Last I heard.
Yeah. So we're still waiting on the, the design options from Orion Planning and Design, I believe it's Orion Planning and Design. It was actually supposed to be back this week, but the hurricane caused a delay in that, and so hopefully, we'll have some more information in the next couple of weeks.
So November, it'll be Election Day. Will the GM be open for the election, for the voters?
Yes. There's, I, I.
The gym was never planned to be closed for the election.
Yeah.
They have the election order.
Yeah.
I'm just asking.
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Thank you for your comments. Anyone else have any comments this evening? Yes, please come forward.
That's fine. I'll share.
We can share. We can share.
Hello. My name is Brandon Worthy. I own a few units on Lawrence Street. I came to the first meeting in August and discussed how the drains in front of my building had been blocked. The city did come and open one of the drains. However, the other two remain partially blocked according to the plumbers. It has been frustrating that this issue has not been resolved, and I just wanted to bring it back to the council's attention. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your comments and for the materials, and I understand that Mr. Bradshaw is working with you on this project. All right. Any other comments this evening? Yes.
Hi, I'm Wanda Woodard, and I appreciate all of you for what you've done to get us back running after the storm. I know other cities weren't as fortunate as we were, and they've had a lot of problems with crime and all that, and I haven't heard much of that in Dublin, so I was only out of power for five days, and I considered that very fortunate, so, and didn't, I never ran out of water, so thank you for that. One of the issues that I'm here tonight for is, there are quite a few of us that were not happy when Elm Street got closed at North, I mean, at Moore Street. We would have liked to seen that stay open because it's cut through use to go to Green Acres, Holly Hills, and all that. We'd like to see it reopened. We'd like to see the sidewalk taken out or either moved over, and Elm Street continuing on the Moore Street. I see a greater use of it for transportation than to walk around the park. The sidewalk can always be moved over. The second thing is I don't see it being maintained well. I rode my bicycle over there the other day, and there is a huge erosion problem over there, and somebody at the city knows about it because it's been recently mowed, and there, one on either side of the sidewalk is probably a five-to-six-foot hole, and it's within, that close to the sidewalk. Second thing is, if you're not gonna open it up, then most of us are taking Duncan Street. And Duncan Street is very, it's about the same width as Elm, but it's a lot darker on that street. It's very hard to see, and the children play right in the ditches. What I'd like to see is the city pick up the trash better. Right now, if you ride by, there's tires in the street, in the ditches. There's a bunch of metal in the ditches, and that has nothing to do with the storm. And I'd also like to have a four-way stop put at the intersection of Duncan and Highland, because when I go down Duncan, there's trees that you literally cannot see a car coming until it's right on you.
Excellent.
So if we could get a four-way stop at that intersection, I've talked to a lot of other people that use that same cut through, they think it's a great idea, too. Third thing is, the brick repair, the sidewalks, we went from concrete to a lot of brick work, and the brick work is falling apart. There are holes in it. The vegetation has grown over, has nothing to do with the storm.
Where, which area?
All up and down. If you, if you walk on either side, like where the collection was, where Stacey Ashley's place is, either side, in any of that area there, vegetation, there's, there's some places that you can only, it's down to that wide a place of brick.
Ms. Woodard, your time's up.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, thank you for those comments, and if you have additional comments, we'll be glad to take those after the meeting, especially if they relate to traffic. We'll get Mr. Bradshaw, who's right behind you, as our traffic person.
Scheduled to pick up the debris.
Okay. Thank you. And I'll, I'll say this, that we're aware of some of the issues at Elm Street, and there were some, there were some reasons why Elm Street was, had some problems connecting it to the roundabout, and it would have required condemning some additional houses, but we're aware that that is an issue, and we're trying to see what kind of solutions might be possible there. And also, you're not the only person who's said that that traffic has now been diverted onto Duncan Street, and so we're also looking at what improvements we can do to Duncan Street to maintain safety in that area. And I'll, I'll say this, that we're aware of some of the issues at Elm Street, and there were some, there were some reasons why Elm Street was, had some problems connecting it to the roundabout, and it would have required condemning some additional houses, but we're aware that that is an issue, and we're trying to see what kind of solutions might be possible there. And also, you're not the only person who's said that that traffic has now been diverted onto Duncan Street, and so we're also looking at what improvements we can do to Duncan Street to maintain safety in that area. But I appreciate you coming and sharing your comments, and, and again, Mr. Bradshaw, who's our city engineer, will definitely take note of those, and, and we're working on those items. Thank you very much. Any other citizens' comments? All right, yes.
Someone. My name is Jacqueline Denise Janine White. Well, first of all, good evening, city of Dublin, and especially to the city council. My name is Jacqueline Denise Janine White, I live at 603 Hudson Drive. I stand before you as a city, a citizen of Dublin to first say thank you to the city council and all who are here under the sound of my voice. We have seen the national news about the devastation in North Carolina and in Florida, but we as citizens in Dublin and part of the grand state of Georgia and this United States of America pulled together during the storm, arm in arm, hand in hand, to help bring our city back to order. I would like to thank everyone in this room, at home, on social media right now, for all the hard work that you collectively did to bring our city back to normalcy. Because of all our resilience, we can stand proud that we as citizens of Dublin and citizens of these United States of America will and shall overcome. And I'm gonna present this to the mayor, and I would like you all, if it's possible, you go through, what you the first see. These are all the pictures of everything that happened through the carry aisle. These blank pages are for us to sign, if we can put this out in the hallway, and as people come in, and put this in there to them, to thank the citizens of Dublin for their great cleanup.
Thank you, Ms. Wright. Thank you for that. Any other citizens' comments? I tell you, Ms. Wright, whenever we do something wrong or that you don't like, you tell us, but then you also praise whenever you think there's something good that's happened, so that's always good to know. If there are no other citizens' comments, Chris, any comments from city attorney's office?
No comment.
Heather, any comments from city clerk?
No comment, thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Mascara?
No comment.
Mr. Griggs?
I would like to thank everybody for coming, and have a good week.
All right, Councilman Colby?
I just want to especially congratulate our employees for so many long years of dedicated work to our city. We said it over Hurricane Helene, but we've said it time and time again, that our city would not be what we are without our employees. I saw a lot of messages, even on Facebook, giving shout-outs to our city employees, and so we're so grateful for the work that they've done to keep our city safe and, and clean during this, and cleaning up after this time of the storm. So thank you all for being here and being involved, and I'm just excited that we were able to, again, have the opportunity to roll back our taxes to give people some relief.
All right, thank you for those comments. Councilman Godfrey?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you all for coming tonight. Thank Mr. Anthony Chapman for his prayers, that was really good. I want to say thanks to the city employees for all they have done to clean up the city through this trying time, and thanks to the constituents for being so patient. Me more than anybody want the streets cleaned up, and y'all know this, but I have not been bugging my employees, but I want to, but thank y'all so much, Tara for your team, and Pritchett Park is having their-
Tale Fair reunion.
Tale Fair reunion, and I'm so proud of that park. I pray it gets done before Saturday. It's looking good, so thanks to all the employees that are taking the time to get that area cleaned up and looking pretty for the reunion. Sorry I won't be there, I'll be in Memphis, but I'll be there in spirit, so thank y'all.
Thank you for those comments. Councilman Jones has requested to go last, so we'll defer. Councilman Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. I, too, just would like to thank everybody for being here. We greatly appreciate our employees and the dedication they've shown during this devastation that, that not only we've seen, but other areas around us have certainly seen equally as much or more. So just thank everybody for being here, and everybody be safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Brown. Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to echo what everyone has said, thank our employees for the longevity that they've shown, and for hard, all the hard work, but one thing I noticed that during this storm was unified city. It wasn't no Democrat, Republican, wasn't none of this, it black, white, everybody came out and helped each other, and I wish that we could keep this going, not only through hard times, but for good, for, for, for going forward. We're too small of a city to have this division, and a lot of outside politicians to come in and divide us like this. We're too small of a city for this. We went to school with each other, we, we're neighbors, we know each other, we basically know our children grew up together, so we know each other. We need to be kinder to each other, but at the same time, we need to understand that we're gonna have differences of opinions. Just because we agree don't mean we got to fall out because we disagree. I'm not gonna agree with you on everything, God didn't create us this way. So please, even the Bible say, come let us reason together, and let us get a understanding, and I'll not get and get a understanding. Second, they touched on it, our city employees did a wonderful, wonderful, wonderful job. But I also want us to realize this, when we talk about this millage rate, we don't roll this millage rate back, we are two miles below the city, the county. A city our size should not be below no five miles, before, below no six miles, let's just be real. I understand people talking about, we rolling back saving taxes, no you're not. You saving what, less than a hundred dollars? Let's be real about this, for, on your house, let's be real about this. When you go talking about what you're rolling this millage rate back to, our employees out there during, during this time, rolling back this stuff, cutting when they had their own stuff at their own house that needed to be done at their own house, they was without power. These same employees for the senior citizen, that's two that cannot push their, their trash can out beside the road, it's our employees that go up to her house if they sign this waiver, and get that dumpster and roll it out for her so she don't have to do it and take it back. These same employees bust their butt and do everything they got to do, they deserve a livable wage, not just the ones that's, that work in City Hall. I'm talking about the grunt, I call them the grunt employees. The employees that came to work when City Hall was closed down, they stills out there working, cutting chainsaws, doing they had to do, working out. These city employees deserve this. We go talking about what we doing for the city, the grant that we got, we had to put up a million dollars to get 2.2 million dollars. These are the kind of work that we have. I know I'm speaking for my ward, Ward 1, and I can speak for Ward 2, two of the worst wards in the city of Dublin. We got crib, gutter, we got issues over there that need to be solved. We can't solve these issues when we keep rolling back this millage rate. I waited, I waited, when I first got on council, that's when the closing Shunrock and Shannock came up about putting the gate there. I got criticized for supporting that, but when they gave me the facts and said, these people came there, then I did this, then I did that, the council, then I did this, they asked for this, they asked for that, I supported it. And people ask me, why you support it? I said, I don't have seven years to wait to get stuff done in my ward. This stuff on West Mary, we been, I been fighting West Mary since the day I got on council. West Mary, I tell him, I tell the citizens over there, and I thank council, I thank us for getting this grant that fell in our lap and doing all this right here, I thank us for doing this, getting the CBG grant. I could've got West Mary paid a long time ago. I said, there's no need to get West Mary paid if you're not gonna put the crib and gutter up there. All you doing is just, just putting lipstick on a pig. So I tell the citizens, we go talking about rolling back, and I love, and I thank y'all for coming here, I really do, but it very ironic to me that the school board decided to have a meeting at the same time, they knew city council was there, that's where you need to be at. I can't tell their story. I can tell our story as a city, as a city of Dublin. When we go talking about rolling back the millage rate, I'm gonna go and tell, I've been about rolling back the millage rate from day one, because I know what we got to do and the projects that we have and paying our employees. We keep rolling back, rolling back, somebody got to roll this up sooner or later. We rolling back like we got all this money, setting up the prices going up. We got a wastewater treatment plant that's 120 million dollars need to be repaired. We sit there, keep kicking that crib down the road, I brag, and I, and I brag, and brag, and brag, that as far as I know, the city of Dublin never had a boil water advisory. But we came mighty close to it during this storm, mighty close. These things that child, that citizens don't know about, when they go talking about the millage rate, the city of Dublin millage rate is not your problem. I can promise you, it's not your problem. At Ford Park, whatever you rolling it back to, you looking like, look it up, a city the size of Dublin, millage rate is average 6.5 miles. There's no way they didn't understand what they got to do to keep that city going, keep going. We talk about these grants, all grants are not free money, we got to put some money up to get it. Half of that money came from, half of that million dollar came from the county. So we go talking about this, and everybody clapping, oh yeah, I don't make campaign promises about rolling back taxes, 'cause I know you talking about rolling back, you ain't rolling back but a couple of dollars. That's it. So as we sit there, and you sit there and you go to thinking these, thinking for rolling it back, when you got these problems, and they sit there where we ain't got the money in the budget. This is what it's about, y'all. Go to the school, like I said, I appreciate y'all being here. Go at the school what they doing with their money. Let them tell you their story. I can tell our story, let them tell you their story. Thank you.
All right, thank you for those comments. I just, I mean, we did, we did have an agenda item on the tax millage rate, and that would have provided everybody an opportunity to respond to some of those points. Some of the things you said I agree with, and some of it I think does need clarification, though. The city has over 24 million dollars in reserves. Even at a 4.6 mil rollback rate, we'll have over 300,000 dollars more in tax revenue than we budgeted to have this year, and five out of five of the items that we approved this evening were funded by grants. So, you know, the millage rate is only one of a small number of revenue sources that the city of Dublin has, and I'm very proud of this council for voting 5-1 to roll the millage rate back fully. Mr. Daniel, do you have any comments this evening?
No comments.
All right, thank you for that. You know, obviously, Mr. Powell's not here, Blake Daniels is filling in for him, and Blake is doing this on his birthday, so I want to say, happy birthday to Blake.
Happy birthday.
I tell you, Blake does a fantastic job for the city, and appreciate you being here this evening, everything that you do to keep our finances in order. I also want to say that we had a great celebration this afternoon for Red Ribbon Week. We had the Dublin Housing Authority's After School Program come in to City Hall, and it was great to see all those kids here. They were fantastic, they were so well-behaved and so enthusiastic about it, so that was, that was a great program this afternoon. We also celebrated our retired educators, and celebrated the Retired Educators Week that will be the first week of November, so was glad to see the retired educators in the room this afternoon. We also had the opening of the pickleball courts at Middle Georgia State University this morning at 11 o'clock, and there was a great turnout for those, those new courts that we've got at Middle Georgia State. I'd encourage everybody to go out, it's a great sport, it's a great way to stay active and healthy. We have upcoming, the new playground at Hillburn is now open and available to the public, we'll have a ribbon cutting on that, and also, we're very close to being finished with the playground at Pritchett Street Park. So there's a lot of great things happening in the city of Dublin. But I'll say the thing that I'm most proud of is the way that the citizens acted in the aftermath of the hurricane. Obviously, we didn't have any criminal issues at all, you know, many communities suffered in ways that, that we didn't, and so we have to count our blessings. As bad as things were, we really got off light compared to what happened in other places, but the reaction of the community was amazing. The morning after the hurricane, I drove around town just to look at the scope of the damage, and what I saw, every neighborhood in town was people out in their yards cleaning up the morning after. There was a lady on, it was in Scottsville, she had her rake out and was raking the gutters with limbs and piling the limbs up, and she must have been 87 years old, and she was out there the very morning starting the cleanup, and I saw that all over town. I also heard about and saw neighbors checking on neighbors, and that's really what is the best part of living in a small town, is knowing your neighbors, knowing your family, being connected to your friends, living nearby, and caring about them. And so I saw so many people who went and checked on their neighbors to make sure that they were doing okay and bringing them aid. So I think that the city staff did a fantastic job. Y'all were, y'all, y'all worked many hours beyond what you normally do to make sure that the water was still running, and that the, that the power got back on and the limbs were cleaned up, but really what was amazing was the way the citizens acted. Everybody was on their best behavior, and it, and it showed, you know, whether it was bringing food to the different shelters that were set up, giving drinks to the linesmen that were out working, or just cleaning up your yard, it really was the best of Dublin, and I think it made everybody proud to live in this community. So on those words, we'll adjourn this evening and look forward to seeing you next time.